I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order this rainy April 4th, Monday of 2025. I see we have a full house, and that's wonderful. We appreciate everyone being here. If you would please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, you have also instructed us to pray for our governing officials, and we come to you in the spirit of this petition. We pray for our national, state, county government, and its executive legislative and judicial servants. May they indeed be servants unto the people and govern in a very virtuous manner that protects the right to life, liberty, and property. May they all heed your mandate in Romans 13:4, "to be in positions of authority as, quote, 'God's servant,' and for the good of the public." They govern in what we confess are difficult times. May they plead with you to give them wisdom, and may your grace to govern wisely be poured out on them. Protect us from the oppression and loss of freedoms that our other countries have experienced, and help us to value and preserve freedom, which we know comes only from you, in the most holy and precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We do have three commissioners that will be joining us. Commissioner Reeves is delayed, Commissioner Connect is delayed, and Commissioner Vorbeck has a son who has a recital as we speak, and they will be joining us soon. I do have...
We are just so excited to be here.
We're very glad to have you. I was in church yesterday, and I heard that too, as well. You have the agenda before you. Are there any additional items to add to the agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
No.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as submitted. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do you have the consent agenda in front of you? Any corrections to the consent agenda? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion approved.
Is your mic on?
I don't think so.
Bill, her mic's not on.
But I can speak loud. Oh, motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. We have four special presentations, and just some guidance before we get started. We normally, it's a tradition to take a picture with all the awardees and individuals that we're recognizing. So what we're going to do is we're going to put all the presentations on the proclamations, and then, once we're done, we'll all convene up here in groups. We'll start with the first group being the bowling team, second group being utility workers, third group being the Ag Week staff, and the fourth group will be the Child Abuse Prevention Month recognition staff. So, here we go. I will allow Commissioner... This is a back-to-back, second year in a row where the Lee County Southern High School has won the bowling championship, so please, Commissioner Lovick.
You know, in Lee County, when things like this happen, it's a pretty big deal, especially I don't know that Lee County's ever had a back-to-back state champion in anything. So if we'll let the bowling team come up... So these guys that are coming up, like I say, are back-to-back state champions, and they don't even have an bowling alley to practice at. So imagine getting good at something that you don't even have anywhere to practice it unless you want to travel at least an hour out of town to practice it. Tonight, I'm honored and privileged, like I say, to bring before you the state champions of the Southern Lee Bowling Team, and I'm going to read the proclamation for these gentlemen. The proclamation is recognizing the achievement of the Southern Lee High School Men's Bowling Team. Whereas the Southern Lee High School Men's Bowling Team, the Cavaliers demonstrated outstanding dedication, hard work, and exceptional skill at the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Bowling Tournament. And whereas, after a fierce competition against rival Scotland and securing the victory in the best-of-three matches, the Cavaliers proudly claimed the 2025 state championship title, achieving their second consecutive win. And whereas the team format is a rotation of five players per team, two frames each, with Mark Lovick, not this Mark Lovick, my younger son there, with Mark Lovick leading off as the leadoff bowler for the Cavaliers, followed by Tucker Maria, Landon Lovick, Blaine Downing, and Markell Brown, under the leadership of head coach Vicki Wilkinson and assistant coaches Peggy Gunner and Wayne Gamble. And whereas bowlers from the men's team also saw success in individuals, the men's top bowler, Markell Brown, winning the sixth in the state, Tucker Maria taking 10th place, while Blaine Downing and Landon Lovick wrapped up the individual tournament in 13th and 19th places, respectively. Whereas the Cavaliers represented Lee County admirally in the NCHSA men's state bowling tournament to close out the 2025 bowling season. And now, therefore, the Lee County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim tomorrow, guys, so you get to walk around with your heads up at school, we're going to proclaim Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, as Southern Lee High School Men's Bowling Team Day in Lee County, not just your school within Lee County, North Carolina, and call upon the residents to observe this day, recognizing the celebration, the team, and their contributions to and success shared with the Lee County community. And this is presented the 7th day of April 2025, and it is signed by our chairman Kirk D. Smith. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Motion's been made to approve the proclamation recognizing the Lee County Southern High School Bowling Team Champions for North Carolina 2025. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Coach, don't let them leave, and we have to have the proclamation to enter it in the record. Excuse me. Haley, do you have the blank one in here? Okay, never mind. Disregard. If I could have the representatives from Central Carolina Electrical and our representatives This proclamation is recognizing April 18th, 2025, as Electric Utility Line Worker Appreciation Day. Whereas the Lee County Board of Commissioners celebrates and commends the work of all electrical utility line workers who work in a profession requiring passion, dedication, and extensive training. And whereas, Lee County is served by Duke Energy and Central Electric Membership Corporation line workers, and especially during major storms, these line workers operate in dangerous conditions to repair broken power lines and equipment. And whereas, electric line workers often are the first responders during storms, whose work is critical to making the damaged area safe for other public safety heroes. And whereas, Duke Energy and Central Electric Membership Corporation line workers and other linemen are on call 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to maintain our electrical infrastructure and keep the power flowing to everyone. And whereas, due to the danger of their work with high voltage, these men and women put their lives at risk every day for the citizens of our community. And whereas, the U.S. House of Representatives recognizes the efforts of line workers in keeping the power on and protecting public safety, and has designated the celebration of National Lineman Appreciation Day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim April 18th, 2025, as Lineman Appreciation Day in Lee County, and call upon the citizens to recognize the contribution that these public servants make every day, and to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Adopted the 7th day of April 2025, signed by myself and attested by Haley Hall, clerk to the board. And I would like to add deepest appreciation of the men and members of your staffs that went to the western counties of North Carolina last fall to render aid and assistance to a horrific disaster that had struck us. And we can't thank you enough, and we wish that you be safe and be careful. So, thank you, sir. Ms. Chairman, can I make a motion to approve the proclamation? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution? Motion's been made to approve the resolution. Commissioner Lovick? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Lee County Ag Week Proclamation. Could I get your staff, Dr. Burke? Amanda? Daphne? She's more than welcome. Come on. She's all part of the group here.
Should I pull a lead out here soon, now that it is?
I think she's one of the youngest members we've had attend. Lee County resident, that is. Lee County Ag Week Proclamation. Whereas, Lee County has a strong tradition of agriculture and farming rooted in progressive and sustainable sound practices, and whereas our population continues to grow, and as the need for food and fiber increases, local farmers have risen to the challenge by continuing to meet the increased demand for wholesome, safe, and nutritious food. And whereas, Lee County farmers are environmental stewards of the land, as the health of the soil and water is tied directly to their livelihood. And whereas, with future generations in mind, our farmers continue to lead the way through the dynamic and diverse nature of their operations, driven by innovation and adaptability. And whereas, the agricultural sector continues to be the state's largest industry, which serves as a foundational catalyst that creates jobs and stimulates economic growth. And whereas, we also recognize the role of North Carolina Cooperative Extension, Lee County, center in addressing timely issues impacting local agricultural producers by delivering trusted, research-based information and resources directly into the hands of farmers and agribusinesses. And whereas, we recognize that it is also of critical importance for citizens across Lee County to understand the value that agriculture brings to our local economy and its roles in helping make this community a special place to reside. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize the fourth week in April, Lee County Ag Week, a time designated each year to celebrate the agricultural challenges and opportunities through education, awareness, community engagement and community engagement. Sign this day, 7th day of April 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
No.
Motion's been made to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. We always appreciate your support of agriculture in Lee County. Hopefully, everybody received our invitation to our Stakeholder Breakfast coming up here in a couple weeks, as well as our farm tour that will kick off Ag Week the following week. We'd love to have you join us. This year, the farm tours are going to be out to Ayers Family Farm, as well as the Howard Family Tree Farm, both of which, both operations of which you've heard a little bit about before during our discussion with the Conservation Easement Projects. We are just so grateful of your continued support of what we're doing in agriculture, the steps that we've taken toward farmland preservation, and thinking about the future of what this community will look like while supporting our farms and our farm families. So I just wanted to say thank you very much. Yeah, give it back to Haley. We have to, she has to stamp it. Following proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month, and shine a light on child abuse. Whereas children are vital to Lee County's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community. And whereas, the Lee County Board of Commissioners supports the victims of child abuse, and its staff works tirelessly to provide resources to victims of child abuse. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of the partnership created amongst citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas Children's Advocacy Centers of North Carolina is requesting partners across the state of North Carolina to light their buildings blue in the month of April to show support of victims of child abuse. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners proclaim the month of, this month of April 2025, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Lee County, North Carolina, and call upon residents to observe this month by helping and supporting families in our community, thereby preventing child abuse and supporting victims of child abuse, and to shine a blue light at the Lee County Historic Courthouse to show its commitment to victims of child abuse. Adopted the 7th day of April 2025, signed by myself, the chair, and attested by Haley Hall, clerk to the court. Clerk to the board. I'm sorry. Sorry for the promotion. My mistake. Just came out naturally. We were talking about the courthouse here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as, or excuse me, the proclamation?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the proclamation. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. What we're going to do now is consolidate with the commissioners at the stage. We'll start with the bowling team. So where y'all at? Y'all didn't leave. Come on. Here we are. Coaches included. All the short people in front. Mr. Reeves, would you like to chair? We're going to be up here before our...
No, I'll just pass out on the floor.
Energy, please? Come on, gentlemen?
[inaudible]
Wow, thank you for that. I don't think we've ever had four proclamations in one day. Is Emanuel Whitehead, our white head, excuse me, from the Lee County Youth Council is Introduce yourself, work on your public speaking extemporaneously.
I'm here representing the Lee County Youth Council. Thank you for having me here today.
And what school do you go to?
I go to Lee County High School.
Lee County High School. And what are your, are you a senior, junior?
I'm a junior.
Okay. And what are your plans for the future?
I am hoping to attend Chapel Hill and major in health sciences. One day, I want to become a pediatrician, I mean, not a pediatrician, a physician's assistant.
Oh, you can start there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Make sure you take copious notes for your council.
Yes, sir.
And we have Alana Tewilliger, young commissioners. Alana, come up and introduce yourself. Tell us what school you go to, what are your future plans?
Hello, my name's Alana Tewilliger. I'm the secretary of the youth council. I go to Lee Early College, and I want to major in chemistry, and I don't know where. I'm a junior.
You have a lot of time to work on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, public comments. Mike Sawaya. Yes, sir. You have three minutes. Please introduce yourself and give us your address.
My name is Mike Sawaya. I live at 299 Raccoon Court here in Sanford, and I've been a resident since 1981. I'm raising a first grader at Trambway Elementary, and I wanted to talk about teacher vacancies. Our neighboring counties and ourselves saw a significant change in teacher vacancies, and that is primarily driven by teachers announcing that they will not be teaching next year. So it's not unexpected. The magnitude is a concern, of course. Wake County, Harnett County, Lee County, and Moore County all significantly increased teacher vacancies this month over each of the months prior to this year. Chatham County did not. Chatham County actually went down slightly, and of course, we all know, they have the most significant teacher pay supplement package of any of our rural neighbors. Lee County continues to have the highest rate...
I was going to spill the beans about Tanner's promotion, but he was like, no, I don't want to be the center of attention, I was like, okay, that's fine, so, but, but just so you know, Tanner has taken a position with the town of Benson as planning director, so, big promotion for him and I'm really, really proud of him, too, so. Anyway, to the matter at hand, just a little bit of background, our UDO, can everyone hear me? Our UDO as of two thousand and six, so, any subdivision that was platted after January first of two thousand and six does not allow privately maintained roads and by that, it's for major subdivisions, right? You can still have a minor subdivision that has an easement and you have some landlocked parcels in the back that you can get to through an easement, but for a major subdivision like this, anything that's over six lots, you're required to construct an internal street that is then built to DOT specifications and then turned over to DOT at some point. Much like in this case, a developer is going to design a subdivision, plat it, and then get it approved, hopefully, and then build it out and then it is their responsibility, their being the developer, to actually go through the process of turning those roads over formally to NC DOT. They have to make sure those roads are built to a certain standard, are in good shape, and then turned over to DOT. The reason for this being, if a developer does not do that, over time, of course, those roads are going to crumble, right? Those roads are going to fail if they're not maintained very well and if you have a neighborhood with thirty, forty, fifty homes, the cost of those, roads are expensive to build, but they're really not cheap to maintain and repair, too. So it's much easier if you're paying your state taxes and DOT can come in and fix those roads, that cost is borne by everyone through your state taxes. But if it's a twenty, thirty, forty, fifty lot subdivision, it is really, really pricey and if one person says, I don't want to pay that, then it just becomes a huge fiasco, it becomes a very sticky legal situation. So it is very important that we make sure developers do maintain those roads to a certain standard and then, when they can, turn them over to DOT. That being said, Mr. Van Gross Jr. is here and he and his family have done a couple of subdivisions in, you know, the last twenty-some-odd years. There's Copper Ridge and there's Copper Ridge West. What's that? East, I'm sorry, east, east, sorry, Copper Ridge East. Those, I cannot remember off the top of my head what the streets are, but I can verify that all the streets internal to those neighborhoods are maintained by DOT. If you look in GIS, they have a little SR number next to them on the street name. So yes, we do have some orphaned roads, as Commissioner Smith describes them as. There are a couple neighborhoods, as mentioned, I think everyone here is familiar with, the Pendergrass Village Project that the city of Sanford recently annexed and approved, at least in terms of rezoning, that is wedged between Waterview Estates and Franklin Chase. Waterview Estates was developed by, among other folks, Mr. Bobby Hall and then Franklin Chase was developed by, among other folks, Mr. Bobby Branch. I've been in discussions with both of those gentlemen and they are, Mr. Branch has agreed, he understands he needs to get DOT moving to get those roads into tip-top shape and then turned over to DOT so that the cost of repairing them does not fall back on the individual residents in Franklin Chase. Mr. Bobby Hall, we are in discussions and I'm going to be sending a letter to start the formal notification process to him that he needs to at least get started and I'll clarify with this, DOT has eligibility requirements, so you can't just build one house and boom, I've got a DOT road. They do require a certain density, a certain threshold, so we will at least let him know, and I've been in conversation with Whitney and Elizabeth Boone about this, too, about proper phrasing, but we are going to tell him, hey, official reminder, you need to start the process, you need to make sure that you are eligible and as soon as you can, turn those roads over to NC DOT for maintenance. Other neighborhoods on the list, Lexington Farms subdivision off of Wilmer and Cox Maddox Road, there's Mr. Brandon Harrington's. I had a phone call with him last week and a phone call with him today. He is eager to turn those roads over because he does not want to be, you know, responsible for them, so he is going to start the, or he is actually in the process doing it. And then we have Woodbury Farms and Watson Ridge subdivision. I have been in conversation with both of those developers. Woodbury Farms is Mr. Charles Blackwell and Watson Ridge is, it was H and H Homes and now it is Dream Finders Homes and if you drive out in the county, you will see their signs everywhere because they are building houses left and right in the county. So conversations are ongoing and it really is the developer's responsibility, right? That is what they propose, that's what they get approved, and that's what they have to do. I don't like doing, you know, UDO violation citations, that's not, I don't like to do that, but we will if we have to, right? If push comes to shove, that is not something that we want Lee County residents to suddenly get a twenty thousand dollar road improvement bill when they are paying state taxes and their state taxes don't go up if DOT takes over the road. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Just as a reminder for all of you folks, too, there are a couple other neighborhoods, McMillan Lane subdivision, River Falls, Copper, Covet Steel Bridge, and then Copper Ridge Estates, which was a Van Harris project, but another local developer has purchased it and is currently going vertical, building houses on it now. Those are so new that DOT, they can't possibly turn those roads over to DOT yet, but I have been in conversations with all of them and going forward, in the last year or two, because this has been an issue, even at TRC, we are selling, we are saying, make sure as soon as you can, get these roads turned over to DOT so that we can avoid issues like, for example, Doe Run. That was a, some longstanding members of this board might remember the Doe Run fiasco. So, anyway, I'll stop there, if you have any questions for me, happy to answer them.
Questions for Thomas, Commissioner Sharp. Commissioner Reeves?
I've got a couple. How do you fix that problem on the front end as opposed to waiting until it festers and drags us into it?
Sure, so, it's difficult to do because we are, for lack of a better term, we are babysitters, right? That is the developer's responsibility and it is NC DOT's obligation to take that road over if the developer does everything they are supposed to do, right? So, and also, as I mentioned, there is that density threshold, so it's not like it's an immediate thing, right? Where DOT is absolutely going to take the road over right when it's paved. So it is just a matter of keeping track and keeping up with that and making sure that we communicate to the developer, from the TRC stage to the individual house building permit stage, we are aware of this, we are monitoring this, we, it is really serious, we take this seriously, you need to get these roads turned over to DOT as soon as you are eligible to do so. I wish I could give you a better answer than that, we don't have much of a carrot or stick other than that.
Well, I'm looking at documents here. This is page two fifty-five and it talks about it's intended to be maintained by DOT and I'm looking at the document on two forty, the roads will be maintained by DOT.
That's right, yes, sir. Yeah, so with the, so these roads are proposed to be built to NC DOT specifications and DOT is a part of the technical review process. Every month, we have a TRC meeting where any new commercial or multifamily construction and any new major subdivision has to go in front of the TRC. Part of that TRC is the district engineer for NC DOT out of Division Eight down in Aberdeen. So they review it, make sure that, one, they get their driveway permits to build new roads onto existing state roads and then, two, they make sure that those roads are proposed to be built to DOT specifications. Then, when the developer records that final plat, DOT district engineer has to sign it saying, these are good, we will take these over once they're built out and once they hit their thresholds, right? So then, that's when the plat gets recorded, the lots are created, the developer can start building the houses. At a certain point, whenever that density threshold is met, that's when the developer is supposed to, must, go back and petition, fill out the petition with DOT and that's when, I believe, they actually come before you and they, you get a vote up or down on whether to accept it.
Who takes over at that point when they reach the number that qualifies them to pass it over to DOT?
It's supposed to be DOT. Once that developer fills out that petition, submits it formally to NC DOT, NC DOT will come out and inspect, make sure the road is built to their specifications and then they will say, yep, we'll take this over, we'll move forward with it. Until then, it is the developer's respons, the developer owns it.
One last question, do you have a document that explains what I just heard you explain to a person buying in that development so that...
Like for the individual homeowner?
Yes.
We do not.
It should be because the elected members of the board wind up having to answer some of these questions.
Sure, sure.
And requested to track and find out why their roads haven't been fixed.
Sure. I understand that, I don't know how, I don't know how easily we'd be able to do that because the builder, theoretically, the developer, you know, puts the roads in, puts the water in, you know, records the plat, then the home builder, which may be the developer, but it may not, you know, developers can sell, you know, Mr. Gross could sell this whole thing to D.R. Horton or any other builder, right? And then D.R. Horton is going to own all the lots, build the houses, and then they're going to deed off and sell those houses to whomever. It's difficult for us to track when that sale happens.
I know, but if you let developers and the community know, if you want this information, it's available, you can pick it up.
Sure, yeah, I, yes, after the, or once the Pendergrass Village neighborhood kind of hit the news, I was explaining that a lot to the residents in Franklin Chase and Waterview Estates who had heard it from, for the first time, so.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
So just for public information, this is coming for us, it's not a rezoning request, it is a major plat, this is the reason it's coming for us.
That's correct, yes, sir.
So it's already zoned correctly to build these number of houses, some people don't understand that either when they come to us, why are we allowing so many houses being built? It's already, it's already legal.
That's correct, so if you have, and I'm sorry, I'm very long-winded, I apologize, so, but yeah, if you have RA zoning, if a property owner or a developer, and/or developer, meet those, the standards of the RA zoning district, minimum forty thousand square feet, minimum hundred foot, hundred foot lot width, you know, things like that, right? If they meet all those standards, that is an administrative decision that this board makes where you're looking at a plat and you're checking the boxes, yep, they meet this, none of the, none of the lots are too small or none of the lots are too narrow, that is an administrative decision. As opposed to a rezoning, which is a legislative decision, you have a lot more discretion. If you don't like it, if you're bad that way, you can turn it down, you don't have to make an explanation for that. With the administrative decisions, there's a, it's a little more like, well, I've met all the standards of the ordinance that you've put forward, you know, so.
Thank you for explaining that, thank you.
Of course, yes, sir. taxes don't go up if DOT takes over the road. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Just as a reminder for all of you folks too, there are a couple other neighborhoods, McMillan Lane subdivision, River Falls, Copper, Covet Steel Bridge, and then Copper Ridge Estates, which was a Van Harris project, but another local developer has purchased it and is currently going vertical, building houses on it now. Those are so new that DOT, they can't possibly turn those roads over to DOT yet, but I have been in conversations with all of them and going forward in the last year or two, because this has been an issue, even at TRC, we're selling, we are saying, make sure as soon as you can, get these roads turned over to DOT so that we can avoid issues like, for example, Doe Run, that was a, some longstanding members of this board might remember the Doe Run fiasco. So, anyway, I'll stop there. If you have any questions for me, happy to answer them.
Questions for Thomas, Commissioner Sharp. Commissioner Reeves?
I've got a couple. How do you fix that problem on the front end as opposed to waiting until it festers and drags us into it?
Sure. So, it's difficult to do because we are, for lack of a better term, we are babysitters, right? That is the developer's responsibility and it is NC DOT's obligation to take that road over if the developer does everything they are supposed to do, right? So, and also, as I mentioned, there is that density threshold, so it's not like it's an immediate thing, right? Where DOT is absolutely going to take the road over right when it's paved. So it is just a matter of keeping track and keeping up with that and making sure that we communicate to the developer from the TRC stage to the individual house building permit stage, we are aware of this, we are monitoring this, we, it is really serious, we take this seriously, you need to get these roads turned over to DOT as soon as you are eligible to do so. I wish I could give you a better answer than that. We don't have much of a carrot or stick other than that.
Well, I'm looking at documents here. This is page 255. And it talks about it's intended to be maintained by DOT. And I'm looking at the document on 240. The roads will be maintained by DOT.
That's right. Yes, sir. Yeah, so with the, so these roads are proposed to be built to NC DOT specifications and DOT is a part of the technical review process. Every month, we have a TRC meeting where any new commercial or multifamily construction and any new major subdivision has to go in front of the TRC. Part of that TRC is the district engineer for NC DOT out of Division Eight down in Aberdeen. So they review it, make sure that, one, they get their driveway permits to build new roads onto existing state roads, and then, two, they make sure that those roads are proposed to be built to DOT specifications. Then, when the developer records that final plat, DOT district engineer has to sign it saying, these are good, we will take these over once they're built out and once they hit their thresholds, right? So then, that's when the plat gets recorded, the lots are created, the developer can start building the houses. At a certain point, whenever that density threshold is met, that's when the developer is supposed to, must, go back and petition, fill out the petition with DOT, and that's when I believe they actually come before you and they, you get a vote up or down on whether to accept it.
Who takes over at that point when they reach the number that qualifies them to pass it over to DOT?
It's supposed to be DOT. Once that developer fills out that petition, submits it formally to NC DOT, NC DOT will come out and inspect, make sure the road is built to their specifications, and then they will say, yep, we'll take this over, we'll move forward with it. Until then, it is the developer's respons- the developer owns it.
One last question. Do you have a document that explains what I just heard you explain to a person buying in that development so that...
Like for the individual homeowner?
Yes.
We do not.
It should be because the elected members of the board wind up having to answer some of these questions.
Sure, sure.
And requested to track and find out why their roads haven't been fixed.
Sure. I understand that. I don't know how, I don't know how easily we'd be able to do that because the builder, theoretically, the developer, you know, puts the roads in, puts the water in, you know, records the plat, then the home builder, which may be the developer, but it may not, you know, developers can sell, you know, Mr. Gross could sell this whole thing to D.R. Horton or any other builder, right? And then D.R. Horton is going to own all the lots, build the houses, and then they're going to deed off and sell those houses to whomever. It's difficult for us to track when that sale happens.
I know, but if you let developers and the community know, if you want this information, it's available, you can pick it up.
Sure. Yeah. Yes, after the, or once the Pendergrass Village neighborhood kind of hit the news, I was explaining that a lot to the residents in Franklin Chase and one of US states who had heard it from the, for the first time, so.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Connect.
Thank you.
Mr. Lovick.
So just for public information, this is coming for us, it's not a rezoning request, it is a major plat. This reason it's coming for us.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So it's already zoned correctly to build these number of houses. Some people don't understand that either when they come to us, why are we allowing so many houses being built?
Yes, sir.
But it's already, it's already legal.
That's correct. So if you have, and I'm sorry, I could, I'm very long-winded, I apologize, but yeah, if you have RA zoning, if a property owner or a developer, and/or developer, meet those, the standards of the RA zoning district, minimum 40,000 square feet, minimum 100 foot, 100 foot lot width, you know, things like that, right? If they meet all those standards, that is an administrative decision that this board makes where you're looking at a plat and you're checking the boxes, yep, they meet this, none of the, none of the lots are too small or none of the lots are too narrow, that is an administrative decision. As opposed to a rezoning, which is a legislative decision, you have a lot more discretion. If you don't like it, if you're bad that way, you can turn it down, you don't have to make an explanation for that. With the administrative decisions, there's a, it's a little more like, well, I've met all the standards of the ordinance that you've put forward, you know, so.
Thank you for explaining that.
Of course. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Martin.
A quick question and a, and a request. To Commissioner Reeves' concern, would it be worth requiring a surety bond or, you know, is that a topic to be explored?
So that is something that our UDO does have. It is, I don't, it would be whether or not DOT would accept the bond, right? If they would enter into as a party to that, and they typically do not. The city does, and we hold bonds for millions of dollars for neighborhood after neighborhood after neighborhood because the city is taking over the water, the sewer, the sidewalks, the parks, and the streets. They're taking over everything unless it is specifically designated as private HOA maintained. With the county, it is different. DOT, I don't think DOT plays that game. I don't, I just don't think they are willing to do that. And then, everything else is going to be private or city maintained. Now, the city could hold a bond for the water installation, but that's not an issue. You can't get a housing, a building permit if you don't have water. That's not an issue. The issue is after the fact, making sure that that road is not only maintained, but then the developer follows through. I don't know, I, we can have discussions, I can reach out to Marshall. In my experience here, developers in the county have asked for that, but it fizzles out because DOT simply does not, they want you to build the road, they want you to build the houses, then they take it over. They don't want to kind of take on the responsibility of monitoring potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars in bonds. That's been my experience.
I understand.
Yeah.
Recognizing that it is RA, I didn't see comment on the, how the, how this fits into the Sand Lee plan, and I know we've kind of gone back and forth on the Sand Lee plan.
Sure.
Can you just address that?
Yeah. So, the, the long-range plan, the Plan Sand Lee, that is primarily a reference point when you are talking about rezonings, right? Going from RA to LI or LI to highway commercial or what have you, right? When it comes to this, the Plan Sand Lee doesn't, it doesn't weigh in as much because the zoning is already established, it's already RA. My guess is this is probably countryside in the, in the Plan Sand Lee. I don't know for sure. I mean, I'm not going to guess without my head, but I'm sure it's countryside. And RA is the least dense, most rural district that we have, minimum lot size of about one house per, per 40,000 square feet. If you look at the Plan Sand Lee, it says one house per two acres.
Yeah.
That would be, well, I'm not going to give my opinion, but that would be more suitable, I think.
I hear you. I think it would be helpful in the future if we could include that information on the, on the summaries, just so that we know not only the zoning, but also how it's fitting into that plan.
Sure, absolutely. That's perfectly fine. I will just say, if the Plan Sand Lee, if it conflicts with the Plan Sand Lee, but you have existing zoning, again, as long as that developer meets the conditions of the existing zoning, there's, that is an administrative decision that, that, you know, you've already kind of set in place the zoning years and years ago, probably. So as long as the developer meets those standards of the existing zoning and doesn't ask to change it, the Plan Sand Lee can be considered, but it, it probably shouldn't be like, hey, this, this doesn't conflict, or this, this doesn't match.
No, it would, but it would be helpful as we consider changing the plan, you know, so it'd be helpful to see where, where it bumps up against different things.
That, yes, that's very valid. If you have a lot of growth in areas that are zoned a certain way, but the Plan Sand Lee conflicts, I could see how that would be valuable. Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you, Thomas. Question I have, and this is for Mr. Gross, and in the past with the city, usually developers give a price point on what these houses will be sold for, and I, I apologize, I know inflation has hit us hard, so if you're not willing to do that, that's fine.
Well, I will tell you, we bought, someone else developed part of that street, put in 15 or 20 lots. We're building a house out there right now, just put on the market a week ago, it's not quite finished yet, but it's like $420,000, okay? We've built a couple of houses the year before out there, they were in the mid, between $350,000 and $400,000, and I expect that, I've got four other existing lots on River Falls Road that I just sent to, or three more lots that we just sent to get, start the CEPD approval process. So, you know, those are, we've talked to some people about buying lots, and I would expect that they would be at that point or above based on the numbers that they're talking to us about buying lots for. Yeah, I don't, I don't control them, you know, we, we have built numerous neighborhoods over the years, you know, 100 is a little more than I need to build, I'm not in the, I can build 100 lots in a year like some of the folks can. It's a different world out there now, so, so, you know, we are also, while we're building houses, we're also selling lots. The world has changed from a banking, you know, we're thinking we're going, actually can keep, and that's not for sure yet, but what we have been talking about doing is keeping the 13 lots that are old farm road, I think, up there, and then potentially selling the 88 lots that loop around. So, that, does that give you some idea? I mean, how, how close do you need to know? Just some idea?
Trust me, I understand inflation, and if you give us a number now, it'll change.
And people, and I actually have people calling me, asking me that we've written contracts for and going, with the state of flux and not knowing, they're going, what's this going to do to my, you know, what's lumber going to do? What's, and I'm going, I got no idea. I mean, I just, we're just going to have to wade through it together, folks. So, you know, it'll be okay.
Understand. Thank you.
And regarding what y'all were talking about with DOT, sometimes you'll have the homeowners' associations, they get formed, you get enough houses going. The best way to do that is, you know, and typically, as a developer, we maintain control of the homeowners' association until there are enough houses for them to do it. Okay, this is how we've done in the past. When we do that, then we typically have enough homes to start the process of, of turning it over to DOT. You have to apply for that, I mean, yes, it's built to DOT standards. Thomas is exactly right, the map, the plat map, when it's recorded, will say, will be signed by the district engineer, I think, and he'll say it's to DOT standards. Then I think the threshold is 60, it's over half, I, I won't, you know, 60 or 70% of...
It is all that, very complicated criteria right there.
Right, right. And then, so then what happens is when you get to that threshold on each road, and it gets a little tricky because, you know, if you're building a cul-de-sac and only, and you haven't built any houses on that cul-de-sac yet, then you don't want to come, DOT doesn't want, they want to take it all at one time. So if you're building around that loop, for instance, and you haven't built down the cul-de-sacs, it gets a little, they don't, they'll take the main street, but then they don't want to take the cul-de-sacs till they have some houses on them. So, those are some of the issues that come into play with regard to how fast, and then you call DOT, they come out, they look at everything, they say, you need to fix, and they give you a list, and then you fix it, and then sometimes you fix it, and by the time you get them out there, they, you get another list, it's, it can be, but that's how it's supposed to work, and then, and then you get it done and they sign off on it, and they accept the roads, and then it comes to you, and, you know, there's some things like that, okay?
Questions from Mr. Gross. Commissioner Sharp?
No, I don't have any.
Commissioner Reeves?
Okay.
Commissioner Vorbek, I know you came in the middle of this.
Hi. I don't have any questions at the moment.
Commissioner Connect.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to consider the preliminary plat for a major residential subdivision off Sheriff Watson Road?
Yes, approved.
Motion's been made to approve the preliminary plat for the major residential subdivision off Sheriff Watson Road. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2026, 2030 capital improvement plan, and the staff is moving forward. Thank you all, take care.
Good evening. You should have all received at your place a copy of this year's recommended CIP. This is going to look very similar to what you saw in preliminary at the board retreat at the end of January, so. You also have a copy of the PowerPoint at your seat. We'll start out talking about, we did make a few changes to the CIP process for this year. You will see that we are now taking, the project's net will only show the cost to the county is what's being considered in the CIP, so that means like the Moore Center, where they're showing, you know, it's a bigger project, they're expecting state, hoping to get state funding for that. Only costs you'll see here in the recommended is what we are committed to. You'll also see that we have taken a stepfather this year in adjusting costs for inflation based on their assigned year, and you'll see the work that Mr. McQuerry has done for us in looking at the value, inflation rates for cost of government construction, and we opted at 3% back in January. That's probably a little low with everything that's going on in the economy right now, but that's what we're, we're sticking with for, at this point. As far as requested projects go, we wanted to update you on the newly submitted projects for this fiscal year. Most everything else that's in here has been in the process before, but we do have four new projects, that being the Warren Williams preschool renovation that is being proposed. You can see that information there. That project is ineligible for lottery funding, so they would be asking for $4,673,965, and that's the adjusted cost to put that project as they requested in 2627. The community college added two projects this year, both of those being related to the emergency services training center being fire, one being the fire and EMS new training facility and tower. That would be a cost of $7 million, I mean, excuse me, a total cost of $7 million with a million coming from the county. You will also see they've asked for driving track rehabilitation, that cost is roughly And then there's also the OT Sloan Parker Aquatic Center, and you have seen presentations to, you, based on feasibility studies for that and the work we would like to do there. That, it's put out in fiscal year 2829, and that's estimated cost at that time approximately So, on the next few slides, you'll see the summary of what was requested and when. It starts out with the public's primary and secondary education for schools, the gold star shows the new project. So in that area, we had a total requested over the five-year span of $151,720,243, and outside the five-year scope of the program, we also have $112,023,233 requested, just in that area. In general government, you'll see that we have requested two major projects there, and those total $6,191,000 for CCC and the workforce education. With those additions of those two new projects, we have a cost of roughly 8.8 million, 8.8 million being requested. Community development, with the addition of the aquatic center, we're looking at approximately $41 million over the five years. Public safety is that, with the judicial complex, which would be phase two of what we've been talking about, is going, it's, well, that phase two is in the beyond fiscal year 2030, so the first five years of that would be 98 million, over $98 million. Okay, so that sums up the requested. On the next few slides, you'll see what's recommended. We have pushed several projects out at least one year. Nothing was requested in fiscal year 2030, but we did move one of their projects out to that point. Warren Williams was pushed out simply because that's a new project, and we did not feel like it needed to be, from our perspective, put ahead of projects that were already in existence. So we've recommended $133,719,611 over the five years. The next year, we're looking at the possibility of purchasing land for a school site, that would be coming out of our fund balance. You see there that we have recommended $13.1 million to be financed in fiscal year 26 for a new bus garage. The schools requested the auditorium in fiscal year 26, we had moved that to fiscal year 27 in consistency with what we had done previously. And then we combined that with Lee County High School auditorium renovations, though all that would be done through a financing. But you can see as to how the project spread out over the next five years there. For general government, we can hope to continue to work on the expansion at General Services, and again, that's a project we plan to fund out of fund balance. You see there that we have in fiscal year 27, the renovation of our former main library. I will tell you, we received some new information, we will be reevaluating that project, and also, we'll fill you in more on that as time goes by. Higher and workforce education, CCC. We are looking at doing a financing in fiscal year 26 to take care of our final commitments on that. That would be for the technology biotech center, with which we have committed $4 million to, and then we have a million nine left on the main building renovations that we've committed, and that takes care of our $14 million commitment between buying the Moore Center building and that. You can see we pushed the ESTC projects out to fiscal year 28. If the state were to come through with a $7 million to help that project, then we would reevaluate moving that $1,600,000 or that $1 million ahead. Community development, the main thing there, and then your future is indoor iron furnace park, and that is still in limbo, we're still here, waiting to hear from the state on that project, so that could, you know, that's a moving target. The public safety section, as you know, we're hoping to, we're in a situation where we need to do something quickly about a warehouse, so we are continuing to work on that. So, on the next slide, you will see a summary of how this is broken down between the years, and also, the requested, a lot of times reflects the total cost of the project, so you'll see 306 million was totally requested in the five years, and we're recommending $291,025,281 over the five-year period. If we went back up to one of the projects from the schools, again, as you know, I explained to you back in January, the schools and the community college are both talking Lee Early College. So, on the school's request for Lee Early College, what we're recommending is that they consider applying for one of the lottery grants for that project, and if so, then we would only have a 5% match. So that's what's included in here. That is not a dictation, that's just something we would recommend, we've done that over the years, where we've recommended they use lottery funding, so, but it is not a dictate, and it's totally up to y'all. Because we know, you've made a commitment technically to the Moore Center, which incorporates into a commitment from them on the Lee Early College. So you could, before it's adopted, take that out, that project off the school board altogether. Now, the interesting thing is all these projects and what that does to our debt. As we showed you at the retreat, pretty much the projects that are in fiscal year 26 and fiscal year 27, we are anticipating that we can do those in accordance with what we are setting aside for debt service and growth in our tax base. So if we can, if we can stay on task with that and those projects stay within the realms we're anticipating, we can do these projects that you see listed here, we feel like without an impact from debt on our tax rate, operations could have an impact. Going beyond fiscal year 27, as we explained to you, it is very hard for us to start picking up those large projects that are in fiscal year 27 and fiscal beyond without some sort of impact. So this sheet is kind of a summary of what we're looking at. You kind of have three different options, we actually have multiple options, but the three main ones we looked at was, if you wait to take on the impact of the debt in the, when you absolutely have to, for the projects we've proposed, you would be looking at roughly an 8.18 cent increase in fiscal year 2829, and possibly another 11 cents in 2930 to fund the projects we have in the five-year CIP. If you did an alternative, alternate tax impact upfront in fiscal year going into fiscal year 26, you'd be looking at roughly 9.73 cents. Another one is to wait until a revow in 2728, if we wait until then, you'd be looking at roughly 10.81 cents. Now, there are several different options, you know, you could look at, but that's what we're looking at overall right now. So, our next plan with this is there will be a public hearing on April 21st. We planned for an adoption on May 5th, and it will be at the board's discretion if you want to schedule any sort of work session to discuss the CIP. I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Questions for Lisa? Commissioner Martin?
Well, I get to go first, huh? Great. I, I would like to have the, you know, the meetings to discuss, so I don't know what the process is for requesting that, but yes, I, that would, that would be my vote. No, I don't have specific questions about this. No, I don't. I, I have a statement, though. As I look at this list of, you know, things that we would like to have, things that depending on where we're at in life, we need, right? If I had five young kids or even three young kids that wanted to go swimming every summer, I think we would need a new pool, right? But from, from the position of budget management, what we need and what we want, you know, I think the big thing really is public safety first, right? So, the, the law enforcement center and trying to keep that cost as low as we can and, and looking at... at that. I'll leave it at that for now, and I'll meet with you and get some questions put together. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbik?
No questions at the moment, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'm sure you figured out how you're going to pay for all this.
It's not a popular way, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
The renovation of the former main library?
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to remember why we wouldn't sell that instead of, because we had needs.
Right. At the time, we had, we had space needs, and then looking and talking with staff, my development services director and staff last year, we felt like the cost of renovating the library was a good bit cheaper than the cost of having to build office space. And that's why we decided it might be worthwhile to hang on to the library. We're still reevaluating that. Now, they've done a little bit more looking into it. We know we have to put HVAC in there. Y'all know I am holding my breath, crossing my fingers, dotting on my i's and crossing on my t's, hoping that we get through this summer and into the new building without having to do something to that HVAC system that's there. There is also roof issues that have come to light, and so they're telling me now that our cost per square foot to renovate it might not be as worthy as what we had thought. In addition to that, and departments that we were looking at moving into it, we are concerned about parking, and I mentioned that to y'all even last year when we were talking about this, that we were going to have to look at parking issues. So, at this point, like I said, we have not ruled it out altogether, but we are looking at some other options to where, what we might be able to do so that we can still accommodate those people in other places, but at a much less expensive option, hopefully.
Please.
Do we have any idea where the city and DOT and the railroad stations are at this point?
No, sir, I do not.
That's another thought for that location, depending on where they cite the actual station. Because at one point, they were talking about closer to the old city hall, and I don't know where they are now.
I can check with the city manager and see what I can find out. I'll be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Is there any interest from the board of me trying to work out a schedule for a work session?
I would encourage it.
I would, I'd appreciate a work session. I will get with the clerk and see what we can work out with everybody's schedule. I assume a Friday would be the best time.
Probably the best time.
I will see what we can come up with and come back to you with that. It probably might be best to do it after the public hearing and see what you hear from the public. Is that reasonable with everybody?
Any discussion on that? In agreement on that? Makes sense? That makes sense. I do have one question, and it goes back to the Lee Early College building. Just for public record, when Dr. Chapman and I, via Zoom, she was spelling out the details on how, if we acquire the Moore Center, what opens up and what becomes available. And, of course, at the time, Lee Early College was currently still in trailers, and the proposal was that they would move out all of the entities that are in the Wilkinson Building into the Moore Center. With that said, what's happened now is the Moore Center transition has been slowed down enormously, and so therefore they can't move Wilkinson out or vacate Wilkinson and then turn that into Lee Early College permanent building. So, it's still there in the background as far as a possibility, but I'd hate to have to say we got to build a new building when the agreement was wheeling and dealing. And hopefully, they can get those facilities out in the industrial parks sold or vacated, moved into the Moore Center, and then sell those, and maybe we can come out sort of even.
I would like to emphasize one thing, because we had a discussion with some of the school staff today, and I do want to emphasize that when you look at the recommended CIP, when you see these projects in certain fiscal years, that is the year that I am proposing that they would be financed. So, therefore, if you adopt this, understand that like for the audit, if you were to adopt this the way I have it, then during fiscal year, I'm just going to use the auditorium as an example, during fiscal year 2526, they would go ahead and be seeking architect services and everything so that they could be ready with bids in hand so that we could do a financing sometime in '2627. Hopefully, you know, they will work with us, and we can coordinate timing so that if we have other projects that need financing, that maybe we can combine stuff into one. But I just want to make sure everybody's clear that that's, if, once this is adopted, you know, they will start working at least probably a year ahead. So, just want y'all to be aware of that so that you get good insight on what you're approving. Don't want anybody caught on the bad side of not understanding the logic behind this.
Any other questions for Lisa? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on, we do have commissioner comments. Start with Commissioner Sharp.
I have anything other than, I was glad we recognized all the people we brought in tonight, the line workers, the state championship bowling team, and child abuse. Yeah, so, I thought that was a good deal. That's all I have.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yeah, I was very proud of Ms. Sarah Strong yesterday. I'm mad with ABC for not mentioning Shampin North Carolina. Mainly, I came in the main entrance here this evening, and all that rain. I really want to compliment the maintenance engineers out here. You could almost see your face in that floor. It is just that sparkling and clean, and that takes some work. Once you've never done any real hard work, but I have.
Buff many a floor.
Keeping a floor looking like that is really hard work, and I thank them for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Vorbik, congratulations. How did the recital go?
Oh, he did good. He paused and froze about halfway through, so, you know. He made it all the way through, and he didn't throw up, is what I told him, because he came crying offstage, so it's okay, I know. But he did well. His first reply was, why were there so many more people there? So, he's got to get his nerves under control. My only comment was, spring sports with Parks and Rec has started, and this rain is not helping our Monday night practices, but we've got almost a record number of kids signed up, and they are very happy to be participating, so I'm just proud of our Parks and Rec.
Commissioner Connect?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
Again, for everyone that came out tonight, thank you for coming, and like I say, compliment our commissioners on recognizing four proclamations that we did, and Saturday was a great day. We got to get out to the Farmers Market opening. It was very nice, and the old-fashioned day over at the fairgrounds, and Saturday was a great day, and summertime is coming. We might not see it the next couple of days, but it is coming, and Lee County's got a lot of good things to do, so thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
Just a comment to the Farmers Market on Saturday. If you all had the chance to go, it was just popping. It was fantastic, busy new vendors, excited about the new spot across the street, but it was a really encouraging day in the community, seeing everybody pulled together like that, so, well done.
I'll add to the farmers market. And we left there, and my hands were... Enjoyed it, so I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you again to Southern Lee High School and their state championship. Someday, they may be professionals, and we'll see them on national television. And their utility line workers, a lot of people really don't understand or really are aware of the dangers they face each and every day just working along the roads, but on the same token, they are available when a disaster strikes, and they're the first ones there. I remember coming to a meeting, and I was on the back road of San Lee, and came in, and firemen were blocking the road. And the reason why they're blocking the road was the wires are across the road, and they had to wait for the electric company to come in. So, they take a lot of risk, and we appreciate their service. Without further ado, we do have a closed session scheduled?
Chairman Smith, can I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I felt to give somebody credit for their work. Ben the Query was, did a lot of the work on this CIP, and I want to recognize him for that and say thank you very much, along with other staff, and helping us to get this together.
Well, we thank the staff, and unfortunately, we have a tendency to overlook them, and thank you, Ben. Thank you to our assistant managers, our manager, our clerk to the commission. Mistake there earlier. And our staff, social services, thank you very much. We appreciate general services, they're always busy, and of course, Mr. Brown and Mita, thank you what you do for taking care of the employees. So, without further ado?
Last one, I just want to add one thing since we were doing sports today, but I think we, I shouldn't forget that one of our local graduates here, I think from Grace Christian, Sarah Strong, just won the national championship in women's basketball. I think she represented herself very well. I think she crushed it, so congratulations.
Also, the highest score on freshmen, hasn't it?
Yeah. I think she scored more than probably the whole starting team of the other team. Okay, so, moving on, closed sessions per NC General Statute, 143318.11A5 to discuss the acquisition of real property. Thank you.
We'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion? A motion's been made. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're now in closed session. Go ahead and take five minutes, please, if you need, if we could take five minutes.
If we could take five minutes.
To adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now adjourned. Please drive safely, wear your seatbelts, and no speeding.